All right, let's call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, this is the Board of Commissioners meeting Tuesday, October 9th, 2018, 10 o'clock in the morning. We're going to move right into the consent agenda. This is approval of minutes for special meetings September 11th, 2018. Approval of payrolls, September 21st and October 5th of 2018. Approval of claims, September 20th, September 27th, October 4th, 2018. And weights and measures, monthly report, August 16th to September 15th, 2018. We have the Memorial Opera House agreements, which is Jeremy Gregson Venue Rental Agreement, that's a nonprofit, and Brightside Music LLC, and that's a venue rental agreement. I'll open it up to the floor for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Announcements? New business, we're going to move right into Commissioners, part of the meeting. We have some things on the docket here that are primarily for a lot of construction that's going on. First one is Pangier Corporation. This is payment application number one for the Porter County Expo Center renovation in the amount of $70,039 and 70 cents. That's bid package one, general trades, with a balance to finish of $726,919 and 30 cents. Any questions or comments from the board? I'll open it to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Pangier Corp., payment application number one. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Again, Pangier Corporation, application number one for the Porter County Expo Center. This is a renovation in the amount of $23,329 and 15 cents. This is bid package three for metal studs, drywall, with a balance to finish of $375,442 and 85 cents. Open up the floor to the board.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Pangier Corporation, payment application number one, which is bid package three, metal studs and drywall. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Next is DA Dodd LLC, payment application number one for them as well, for the Porter County Expo Center renovation, in the amount of $32,502 and 49 cents, with a balance to finish for them of $689,720 and 51 cents.
No, one of these says $35,000, and one says $32. Which one is it? Be clear on the address. Or on here, it says 32.5. It is 35, or 32.5.
That's what mine says. 32,502,49.
Yep, so that's the number we have on here, so that's correct.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for DA Dodd LLC, payment application number one for the Expo Center in the amount of $32,502 and 49 cents. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Next is Continental Electric. This is payment application number one for the Expo Center as well, renovation in the amount of $12,092 and 55 cents, with a balance to finish of $542,057 and 45 cents. Open it up to the floor.
Motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Just want to stop right there. I want to give a little bit of an update to the board on the Expo Center renovations. We got into a lot of the underground out there. When we tore into the building, we found out that a lot of the electric out there was all run underground. This building has been placed for 35 years, with no, any work done to it in 35 years. A lot of the underground electric has pretty much deteriorated, so we're now in the process of re-engineering everything. I think we got at the tail end. We're going to be primarily running a lot of new sub panels, new electrical, all overhead. So, I think this is, again, why we're sort of managing the projects the way we're managing them, is that we're finding out these issues as we go along and as we build them, and we're addressing them and dealing with them and value engineering them as we go along. The bad news is, it's going to cost some extra money. The good news is, is we're going to have brand-new switchgear in that building that'll last for a long time. So, there's a good and bad to everything. It's the less expensive time to do it right now, so we're going to go do it and get it done. So, you'll be seeing change orders coming forward on that in the next meeting, but I just wanted to give the board and the public an update of what's going on. We're starting to find some, we're, let me put it to you this way, everything that we're experiencing right now, we expect it. So, we're managing it. We knew some things were going to happen out there, we've budgeted for it accordingly, and we're still moving forward. So, nothing to be alarmed about, this is just an update. Next on the agenda is Shive Hatterley. This is the architect that's been working with us. Is that right, Shive Hatterley? They don't, they're not doing North County. Excuse us a minute, we're double-checking here something. Is that for 157?
Yeah, that's the one.
Better see old quarters. It's 157.
It's 157. So, on number five, it says an invoice for Porter County North Annex Building renovation. That is incorrect. This is the invoice for 157 North Franklin. 157 North Franklin, and that's the building that we're doing space planning in right now. So, that is a correction. That should not be, the invoice for Shive Hatterley is correct. It's the name of the building, this is for 157 North Franklin in Alpharetso versus Porter County North Annex Building.
And Shive invoiced it that way because they, internally their project name is Annex Building.
Oh, so it's, instead of North Annex, they put Annex. We need to probably talk to them about changing that name on that bill. We got enough annexes going around here. Okay? So, that's $23,651.70. To the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Shive Hatterley for an invoice of $23,651.70 for 157 North Franklin Architectural Services. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Garrett Construction. This is payment application number two for the Porter County Courthouse restoration in the amount of $252,011 and 25 cents, with a balance to finish of $116,171 and 50 cents. Open that up to the floor, any questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve, payment application number two to Garrett Construction. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Want to stop there, too, just to give the public an update on the courthouse. Based on our schedule that we had, we were planning at this point in time, probably within the next four weeks, we were expecting deliveries for windows. The window manufacturers had some delays, it's caused some problems up there with our schedule. We have coordinated with the judges and the people that work in the courthouse, along with our construction people and the contractor, we're going to move the window renovation to the spring. So, when we open up the building, it's going to be a little warmer weather and a little drier. So, it doesn't really affect our schedule that much, it's just, we just ran into materials delay.
No, like our utility bill.
And the utility bill, that's right. So, you pay one way or the other. So, I just wanted to give everybody an update on that, because we had talked about doing the windows, I believe, in October, November, and finishing up in December. So, our schedule is moved, but the timeframe and the work that we're doing within everything should still be the same. So, I wanted to give everybody an update on that as well. Bless you.
Thank you.
Next up, Keo Mechanical Corporation. This is change order number one for the Expo renovations in the amount of $32,500. New contract sum, including this change order, will be $73,889. 889, yes. Any questions? Why does this thing keep reverting back?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Wait for discussion here. What is that, what is that one for? That's what I'm trying to get to. Because it really doesn't say on there, and I want to...
It's the stormwater thing, the stormwater.
Yeah. These change orders are basically a lot of underground things. Again, it's some sewer pipe, some stormwater pipe, that when we got into the building, a lot of the underground had been pretty much caved in and whatever. This is a continuation of that, of what we talked about in the electrical stuff. This is more mechanical plumbing and piping type of that. So, that's what that change order is in the amount of. So, I just wanted to give everybody an update on what that change order is for. So, that, again, I have a motion and a second for Keo Mechanical Corporation, the amount of change order one, in the amount of $32,500. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Next, eight, is a change order for Garrett Construction. This is in the amount of $129,600, and what this is for is a continuation of the Plaza project out front of this building. We have gotten with the city of Alpharetso, and we're taking a look at our sidewalks out here in the front of the building. We're trying to get our ADA sidewalk, our ADA parking spots closer to the location where the ramp is. There's a lot of concrete out here along our street that's in pretty bad shape, and this is more of a, it's an additional continuation along the Plaza building, but what we'll end up having is better ADA parking, and it will mirror with what we're doing over here across the street at the park. So, all of our handicap parking, when there's big events and things going on downtown, that will also be, it'll all be in one area, which we think is, is going to be very convenient for the public, and this is sort of the last piece of that puzzle, putting, putting that all together. So, any questions on that? So, we will, I think this year yet, we will have some construction activity going out on the front of the building here, but it'll be sidewalks, mainly sidewalks. So, I just wanted to give everybody a heads up on that. Any comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a change order in the amount of $129,600 for the admin Plaza walkways. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. We get done with that change order, then it should balance out, it should balance out that project, and we'll be able to complete it. Number nine, GIS. These are insurance guys. We have a property appraisal report, and we're going to have them come forward and explain to everybody what we're doing here. Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Mark Behrendt, this is Matt Weber. If you recall at the June Board of Commissioners meeting, we presented a proposal from CBIC to perform appraisals on the county's properties. Kind of considered it the missing piece of our insurance audit, we wanted to make sure we properly established insurance values. Board approved that proposal, and appraisal has now been completed, and as we suspected, the buildings were not insured to their proper values. Overall, the properties were underinsured by a little over 31 million, with roughly 8,400 of that being for the old courthouse, the opera house, and the museum, which we now have insured on reproduction costs rather than replacement costs. Based on these findings, we recommend that the property limits be increased to their proper insurance value. The estimated annual premium worked out to roughly $23,200.
So, we were underinsured by about 8 million bucks?
On the opera house and the old courthouse and the museum, those, and then...
Those are your historical properties.
But overall, it was 31 million.
Good work. Yeah, I think this is, this is, like you said, the last piece of what we're verifying and everything, and now we actually have valuations of all of our buildings. If you go into the detail report, it's every building we have out there has been appraised, there's valuation there, and now we have a point of beginning and a record going forward. So, a lot of work, a lot of work. I would also like to point out, is even though we're contemplating a change order here in premium of $23,213, we're still well within, right around $400,000 in savings for our property and casualty insurance from where we were a year ago. So, even though we're having to spend another $23,000 coming back, this is a real number now, and we're still well below our premiums that we had before, and we're with Traveler's Insurance, which is the top of the food chain in the insurance business. So, we're, we have a good carrier that's behind Porter County as well, too, so.
And our properties are properly insured.
Yeah, right. All of them. So, any questions for these gentlemen? Good work, good work.
Yeah, thank you. Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the property appraisal report summary for the additional amount of premium of $23,213 to mirror our coverage on our appraisals that we have now. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Keep working at it, we're getting there. There's still more meat on the bone. Next, right now, I'd like to put a break in here on the announcement. We have an appreciation resolution that we're going to bring from the floor here and read, and then we'll vote on it. This is regarding Dr. Kovak, who I think at the last meeting, if you were here, has retired from the Board of Health here in Porter County. As you may or may not know, the Board of Health here are all Commissioners' appointments, and then part of the requirement for the state statutes, you have to have two doctors, MDs, as part of your health board makeup. Dr. Kovak has been with us for quite some time, and he retired effective August 31st, 2018. At our last meeting, we reappointed him as replacement, we had a young doctor step forward here from Alpharetso to take his position, but this is an appreciation resolute for Dr. Kovak. So, I'll read that into the record right now, so bear with me. Whereas Dr. Alfred Kovak has retired from his position as a member of the Porter County Board of Health, effective August 31st, 2018, and whereas Dr. Alfred Kovak served in his capacity as a member of Porter County Board of Health for 28 years, and whereas Dr. Kovak did during his service as a member of the Porter County Board of Health, faithfully and conscientiously discharged his duties and unselfishly put forth his talents and knowledge in service to the citizens of Porter County, and whereas the Porter County Board of Commissioners is de sereus publicly and officially expressing its gratitude and appreciation to Dr. Alfred Kovak, and in so doing, acknowledging and memorializing the dedicated and committed service of Dr. Alfred Kovak as a member of the Porter County Board of Health for the past 28 years. Therefore, be it resolved by the Porter County Board of Commissioners that Dr. Alfred Kovak deserves the grateful acknowledgement and appreciation of Porter County Board of Commissioners and citizens of Porter County and the public recognition bestowed by this resolution, and that Dr. Alfred Kovak should be and is hereby commended, recognized and acknowledged for his dedication, commitment, and service as a member of the Porter County Health, Board of Health for the past 28 years, on this day, October 9th, 2018. So, I'll open it up to the floor for any comments, questions?
Well, Jeff Lawrence, we know that one of, one of the difficult parts of our, our positions up here as Commissioners is to find qualified and well-intended citizens to volunteer their time to serve on the, you know, the numerous boards that we have to make appointments to. And Dr. Kovak has done that. Dr. Kovak has done that with, with, you know, deserving of a lot of respect. He's going to be missed, and I motion to approve the resolution.
I agree with everything Jim said, and second.
We have a motion and a second for the resolution for recognizing Dr. Alfred Kovak for 28 years of service on the Porter County Board of Health. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Now, back to the agenda here. Number 10, legal services agreement. I'll turn that over to Attorney McClure.
This is a legal services agreement with Newby Lewis Kaminsky &amp; Jones to prepare an independent legal opinion for the Board of Commissioners and for the county council concerning the 15 North Franklin lease.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a legal services agreement with...
Newby Lewis Kaminsky &amp; Jones.
For, per, per Mr. Attorney McClure's outline. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Look forward to hearing back on that. Number 11, Franciscan Alliance. There, here they are. Hi, Tony.
Hello.
This is in regards to the Healthy Access Program Agreement for the Wellness Clinic that we talked about at our last meeting for the employees of Porter County.
Do you have copies of the agreements? I know we sent those ahead of time.
Yeah, we have them, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Tony.
Yeah, no problem. Tim's here as well to help answer questions, as we may get into some of those, just on either the agreement or just the rollout. So, the agreement, over, over the last few weeks since our last meeting, we've worked out the agreement pretty straightforward, matches what, what we talked about before. It is a two-year agreement, does clarify who's covered to go to the clinic, and that is all members covered under the health plan, so that includes spouses and dependents, with the one exception, if it's a child under two years old, really probably needs to be going to the pediatrician as opposed to that, so just making sure that they're seeing the proper care there. So, that's the one caveat to anyone covered under the plan. So, overall, I think it was, it worked out to be with what was presented and everything. I don't know, Scott, if you have any other...
Yeah, I just want to point out, just so that it's clear, because we've had a little bit of confusion, these things aren't natural for everybody, so I like to just try to make sure everybody gets exactly what's happening. So, this is a two-year contract. It has a 90-day provision that either party could cancel the contract. But this is a two-year contract. The first, the first year, the beginning price is $62 per eligible employee. For the first six months, we would be paying that $62 per employee, per month, but only on 60% of our eligible employees. In months seven through 12, we would be paying it on 80% of our covered employees. If, in that section end moving on, if the utilization rate is not 80%, then, let's say it was 40%, then we split the difference on that and get some of a refund for that. Also, that is the carrot for Franciscan to, with the rollout and the education of our, of our employees. And also, just so everyone's clear on what, you know, participation is or utilization, when we're talking 60%, 80%, that's not just our covered employees. So, in other words, our rough number of employees on health insurance is 525, let's say. But, within that, which, within each employee that's covered, they may have a spouse, they may have children that are on the plan. So, when we're talking 60% utilization, it's everyone on our plan. So, let's say it's 1,500 people that are actually insured, when we're talking 60% or 80% participation, we're talking that bigger number.
Correct.
And then also, you've said it, but I'm going to say it one more time to try to get the concept in. If it's the employee, and the employee has his or her children on the plan, they're eligible for the clinic. If the employee's spouse isn't on our health insurance plan, that spouse isn't part of this clinic. If the kids or, or dependents aren't on our health insurance plan, they're not part of the clinic either.
Correct. Seems logical.
It is, but...
Yes.
Just want everybody to, for the record, and for everyone that's going to have to try to explain this to everybody. So, again, that's how we're, when we're talking about utilization, that's the number we're looking at. We're looking at not just for employees, but dependents, and then also, as far as who's eligible to go.
Correct.
And that $62 is, again, not times 1,500 covered. It's per employee covered.
Correct. And the target date, the rollout here, just as we've discussed, especially with holidays and everything coming up, as far as messaging, we'll be looking to roll this out, the very, like January 2nd would be kind of the open date for it, gives a good amount of time for education. We've got open enrollment coming up, so we'll educate some through that, but then also, definitely want to have some separate meetings as well, because during those open enrollment meetings, there's just a lot of discussion going on about everything else, so we want to make sure that people know and understand this, what it is. So, definitely want to schedule some meetings for, with employees, probably at some different locations, so we can go out to them and present it to them, say, here's what it is, here's how you access it, all those types of things. So, as far as rolling it out, definitely want to have those conversations with employees in direct meetings, not just a flyer hanging on the wall. Anything?
No, we plan on, you know, going to departments and being out there as much as possible to do the end servicing, to get the participation, and make sure everybody, if they have questions, we can answer them upfront. So, that's why we would, you know, that January 2nd date works well, because we just, plenty of time to do that, about two years, to get that done.
So, as everybody remembers, when we rolled this out, we sort of challenged our employees to get to that 60% number. We feel, again, that if we can get to that 60% above number with our use in our clinic here, that we can continue to drive down our insurance costs on our main plan. And so, we're not doing it just to drive our costs down, this is a wellness benefit. This is a big benefit to a lot of people, because now, these clinics are open on Saturday, there's some better hours for people that are working. So, but we really want to challenge our employees, we have to, we have to become a healthier group. And that's nothing new out there, it's happening everywhere out there, and that's the whole plan towards managing your health insurance, is to try and get your group as healthy as you can get them. And that's, we're giving our employees now all the tools to be able to do that, and, you know, help the county and the taxpayers out in return. And so, again, I challenge our employees to use it, and we look forward to rolling it out. I'd also like to say, too, you know, we've been, a little bit earlier in the meeting, we talked about all of our buildings that we're doing, and the change orders and everything. The really cool thing about this, what we're doing here in the health insurance, up in Portage, we're, we're building a new building and cohabitating with Portage Township and some other various county offices up north. We're going to have a community room up there. And I know people think about, oh, a community room, but again, this is another place that when we get that room done, we can do in services, education for our employees in the north part of the county, to where now we have a place to gather and educate. And as we continue to move forward, a lot of this, workman's comp, wellness, it's all about education, and it's all about taking that time with your employees, letting them know what's coming, what works, what doesn't work, and having that interaction. We're now going to be able to have the facilities to where we can have those type of discussions, and not looking for someplace where we can hole up and try to meet in. So, you know, as, we're trying to be purposeful, I guess, what I'm saying with everything that we're doing here. So, I know that's just a little snippet, and, but I, I say that just to show people how we're trying to think of all the different things that can affect the county as we continue to enhance these building improvements, and have places to where we can meet and educate, and communicate to our employees more than what we've done in the past. And that's what Rhonda's going to be tasked with doing going forward. So, a lot of cool things coming up on the horizon here, so I just wanted to fill that in there.
And right along with that, there is, in the, in the contract, the provision that, I mean, we'll, we'll review everything on a quarterly basis, at least, and if we come together and say, hey, you know, this isn't working, or this is working really well, and we can come together with an agreement, we can kind of do the change order of, let's cover this, not that, all those types of things. So, very much, as it moves forward, we don't want to be changing it all the time and adding confusion, but certainly along the way, being a newer program for the county, if confusion, but certainly along the way, being a newer program for the county, if we see something that's not working well, we'll address it.
We got to pivot, turn, and move it another direction. And that's, that's why you manage these programs.
Yep.
So.
You know, there's been a lot of administrative activity at work on part of the Board of Commissioners, and then with you all over the last year of, you know, putting this program together. And the employees, and it's all, at the end of the day, it's done for the benefit of the employees and the taxpayers who pays for these, our health insurance program. It is, I can't overemphasize how important it is to the employees to participate, because if this doesn't work, they're going to expect to carry a heavier load. There's just no, there's just no way around that. We're doing everything on our part as elected officials to keep that from happening. We brought in, you know, a firm such as yourself to come in and show us what the most cutting-edge programs are, you know, to keep the health insurance costs down, you know, in an operation such as ours. So, you know, we're doing our part. They need to do their part now.
Any other questions, Laura?
No, I think part of our part is to provide a service that everyone will want to come to, so it's a win-win situation.
Right.
I think we've done that.
And I think the one thing we've left out is it's free.
Yes.
Free.
But even if it's free, if it's lousy, no one's going. So I think we've made a good choice for people to go.
And we look forward to partnering with the county and the employees to make it a good thing for them, so.
Well, I know when we look at these, and it's always, you know, you want the best responsible bid, but, you know, one of the things that I was very excited about with the Franciscan proposal was that the amount of time and effort that they're going to be spending in educational and outreach. And I know that sounds cliche, but they're also doing it in our workman's comp program now through GIS, that GIS insurance on our workman's comp. We're actually meeting now, we're talking about, you know, certain outcomes and certain things that we can train our employees to do better. So we have better workman's comp outcomes too, which really, the county's paying a lot of money for workman's comp too. So if we can lower that rate and get a better workman's comp rate, it's going to save the taxpayers and the county a lot of money too. And it's just about managing workman's comp now. So it takes time, you have to meet, we have, you know, we have the sheriff, we have, we have a big board that meets on this, and we're talking about outcomes, and I think we talked about, you know, just looking at the different types of shoes we're buying, slips and falls for jailers and things like that. It's really minute stuff, but it's really important in the grand scheme of things, not only for the safety of our employees, but for the overall cost for the county too. So it's a win-win on that point. So I look forward to working with Franciscan. I think it's, you know, we're excited about this, we can, it's, we're ready to go. So now we enter into this, and as Tony knows, we start managing this process now too. So thank you for doing that. I'll open the floor for the contract. Is there any comments or suggestions or thoughts from the commissioners about the contract before we act on this?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve the Healthy Access Program Agreement for the Wellness Clinic with Franciscan Alliance. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We'll see the employees right after the first year and be looking for the rollout updates, and we look forward to rolling this out to you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen. Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Good seeing you again. Next, Expo Center, Lori Daly. It's like we have some fence repairs. Was this from what just happened? Is this for the break-in?
No, that, the break-in is-
That's another one?
This is somebody's brakes gave and came right into gate one.
Sort of a break-in.
I know, yeah, it was kind of, he tried to get in. But that gate stopped him.
Okay. And which gate is this?
Gate one.
Gate one. Gate uno.
It looks like Wonder Company is the low quote, is that what you recommend?
Yes.
Think we've used them before too. I've seen them before, yeah.
Motion to approve Wonder Company at $1,950 to repair the fence and gate.
Second. We have a motion in second for Wonder Companies for $1,950 for repair of gate one at the Expo Center. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Lori. Next, Rhonda Young. We're going to talk about comp time report, again. So are we making some significant progress?
We are. We have animal shelters. She's got her employees paid off, and those were from previous years. So they're done, they're taken out. The first page is where we were in August and where we're at in September. We have one employee that went up, one department, but after that, they're pretty much the same. The second page, I figured out in dollars how much the payouts would be if we were to pay him out. I think the prosecutor's office, they talked about trying to make her exempt, so I'm trying to keep track of the payout, because we want to make sure if that's what he's going to do, we pay her out in 2018, because if she does get a raise or whatever happens, we want to give her the rate that she'd earned it on.
Is that going through the budget process, or is that outside of the budget?
Well, he's got to come in front of the commissioners and to see if you guys would approve the exempt or not exempt.
Oh, that's right.
So after that, then he'd have to go in front of the council.
Do you have any idea when he might be coming?
No, I'm hoping that he gets on the agenda soon.
But is it safe to say that all these departments that are on this list now have a plan and plans?
Yes. Every single one of them have a plan.
Okay. That's what we were trying to get to first.
Yeah, they all do.
Well, it's good to hear we have a plan, and now we can-
We got to make sure they execute it.
Now we got to execute, so here we go again.
So they've done pretty well.
Yeah, that's good to see. We're getting it.
Thank you for your work on that.
Yeah. So that's it with the comp time. And open enrollment is October 15th through October 26th. October 15th will be the day that UMR is here and Delta Dental, along with Ari Sutton, and we're going to have meetings starting at 10:00 a.m. through 6:00 p.m. in the commissioners' chambers. And they'll have presentations throughout the whole day and to answer all questions.
Okay. And that IT is putting a blast out on that? I think they have been, I've been seeing them. I'm not on the insurance, so sometimes I don't.
Yeah, we'll have, now that we have the times for the presentations, and I'm also going to add in there, hopefully the department heads will, kind of, if they can, let the employees come to see the presentation.
And how did, how did we decide to do open enrollment?
We are going to send out a form prior to the 15th. If they don't want to change anything, they're going to send it, but acknowledge that and sign it back that it's offered and they're not changing. But they could still come to the meeting if they want. If they don't want insurance, I still have a waiver, I want them to sign that it was offered and send it back.
Okay.
Don't have to attend.
Good.
Okay.
No?
Any other questions of Rhonda? Thank you, Rhonda. Thanks for the update. Keep plodding away at it. Next up, we have Veteran Services, Jim Atkinson. This is a request for an additional appropriation for Fund 4112, Account 3991, Other Services and Charges in the Amount of $500. This is the contribution to a veteran-related endeavor, the USS Indiana Commissioning Committee. If you remember, that was for $500 towards the $1,000 grant, not a grant, it's for a scholarship for the USS Indiana. Each county, in Porter County, gave $1,000. In Porter County, we have the Veterans Administration giving 500 of the $1,000, and then the other 500 came from donations from, could you give the names? I want to make sure I get it right.
Yourself, myself, Ray, Elwood, and McClure, Mike Justin, and Karen Civer.
And that's what caught up the other $500 were donations from us. So, so that's what that's for. This is for, this is the additional appropriation for the Veterans Services to come up with the $500 for the other 500 for that commissioning grant. Any comments, questions?
Nope.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion in second for a request for additional appropriation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have EMA. I think, are these second readings, or?
No, this first one is the memorandum, the memorandum of understanding that EMA had worked out. This Lake County has signed, this would require Lake County to pay $3,000 payable to Porter County for the maintenance of the District One assets. I think we've also asked all of our, everyone in District One. I think this is maybe the first one we've gotten back.
Correct, this is the first one. Hopefully, we should, we're anticipating at least two more soon.
Yep.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for a memorandum of understanding between Porter County Government and Lake County Government for the purchase, for the purpose of achieving the various aims and objectives relating to the use and maintenance of emergency management system District One assets. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Bartronics, this is an estimate to install Kenwood multi-deck radio, mobile radio and three-deck radio frequency programs in the amount of $5,868.40. And what's this for, Mike?
Commissioner, this is part of the 700 megahertz transition. In fact, I, the next VD items are all connected to that transition for radios, just for the EMA vehicles and personnel.
Does this include the Mobile Command Center too?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Can we vote on these all at one time? Scott? Yep. So we have a Bartronics estimate for $5,868.40, and then Bartronics, an estimate to install an impact speaker mic in the amount of $690, and an estimate to install an EF Johnson Armada kit, Viking portable and mobile software and programming cables, and EFJ programming, hard slave programming key in the amount of $1,094. As you can see, EMA and 911 just keeps becoming more and more complex and more and more equipment. So we can vote on all these, make the motion.
Motion to approve.
All three for Bartronics. Second. We have a motion in second for all three of the Bartronics as originally outlined. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
See you later.
Thank you.
John Miller, Recorder. Morning, John.
Morning, sir.
What do you got?
Well, in the spirit of coming before the commissioners for any maintenance agreements, this is an agreement with, for a machine, it's called a KIP 7170. What it is, is a large format scanner and printer. We use it for Platts. We use it to scan our Platts into our system, and we also use it for providing copies to the public. This maintenance, I noticed, I think, you mentioned on the agenda that the maintenance agreement is a monthly agreement at $1,295. It's not, it's an annual agreement at $1,295.
So that's annual?
Yes.
Sounds a lot better.
Yeah, $1,295 a month is beyond my pay grade. So this is a company Clifford Wall that we have done business with for several years. The Recorder's Office has always had, well, not always, but for probably two decades, had a large format device like this. This one's a newer one, we just purchased yesterday, last year, and the manufacturer agreement has run out, and so this will be an annual agreement. This agreement does include supplies, so that's one benefit of it. Not only does it include the actual hardware maintenance, it does include paper, the large rolls of paper, and it does include toner.
Okay, good. Thanks, sir.
Motion to approve the maintenance agreement in the amount of $1,295 annually.
Second. We have a motion in second for Clifford Wall maintenance agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Good to go. Thanks, John.
Thanks.
Don Welson, IT. Morning, Don, how you doing?
I'm good.
So what do you got for us? It looks like we'll let you, we'll let you give us the lowdown here on number one, NITCO.
Okay. This is a contract with NITCO to run fiber from 157 Franklin to the courthouse, and also run another, run from 157 Franklin to the administration building. One going to the courthouse is going to be our backup, and the one going to here is our primary.
So we will, by, if we were to execute this, then we would actually have a loop for the entire county facilities in the downtown Valparaiso area.
As far as 911, once they move in.
Yeah, when 911 and everything moves in. So we'll have some redundancy built in and some other things into our fiber.
Correct.
Thank you. Just want to make sure, not only are we buying a lot of equipment, high-technology equipment, we have to get the, we have to get the cable and the fiber optics to the building, and that's what this is. This is your infrastructure portion of the IT component of 157 Franklin. Any questions? What is, looking at the amounts here, Don, are these, is the NITCO, is that, so this is?
Total construction cost, that's the number? $2,531.99.
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second for a private fiber optic connector for the Porter County Government Building, 155 Indiana, separately from the, to the courthouse, from the courthouse to 157 North Franklin, in the amount of $2,531.99. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Just a note on the service agreement, there's a place to initial it on the back page. Seems we, every time we-
We always forget those.
We miss it. So I told Tom Carroll I'd bring that up.
Notes, so. When you stack, when you sign stuff that's that thick, you always, you always miss a few.
Yeah.
We try not to. Next, we have an MOU memorandum of understanding between Porter County Government and the Porter County Public Library System of 103 Jefferson Street, Valparaiso, for the purpose of achieving the various aims and objectives relating to the join the PCG telephone system. Don, why don't you tell everybody what we're, what we're doing here and how we're trying to partner up with our library system to help them save some money?
Okay. Yeah, I was approached by the library system gentleman from the board, his interest in if we could help them out with their antique telephone system that they had. Their phone system was so out of date, the director told me that he'd get a voicemail and it wouldn't show up on his phone for two to three days later. So we've been in a lot of conversations with them, and we came up with this MO, Memorial of Understanding, and they are going to buy all the telephones, and they're going to pay the licensing for the phones. Our cost is a firewall, I'm going to install a firewall at the main branch here in Valpo, because that's going to be ours as far as programming. They will connect to our telephone system or call manager. They are purchasing 88 telephones, and that could be a good deal for them.
Yeah, I think it's another way where we're trying to reach out to the different entities that are in government and try to create a single source to where we can maintain, operate. It's much more cost-effective, I'm sure, for the library system. So we're more than happy to help out, and I think you'll be seeing more and more of these things in the future where they make a lot of sense for everybody. So it's a great-
Thanks to Stu Summers and the board over there wanting to work together.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for a memorandum of an understanding between Porter County Government and the Porter County Library System for joining the Porter County Telephone System Program. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. And then we have a lease agreement. What would a commissioners' meeting be without a copier machine? I mean, it's, there's a lot of copier machines out there. And I think this is the one, for the one down in the print shop, it is at End of Life, End of Life?
Yes.
And so this would, give us, give us the, what we're doing here.
Yeah, we're going to go ahead and replace the one we have down there. This is a six-year lease that we're going to sign. The old one, just, just to let you know, a couple, last week, the old one broke down twice in, in one week. So it's well over, I forgot, one and a half million copies or something. I don't remember exactly what it was, but in the, in the long run, it was cheaper for us to buy a new, uh, sorry, lease a new copier than it was to keep paying the maintenance on the old one.
Weren't they having trouble finding parts and?
Yes.
So forth, yeah.
Yep. And the other problem they were having is there's not very many left out in the production and that it was getting harder and harder, fine toner. So that, that was an issue we had a month or so ago. Hopefully, this, this, this will eliminate those issues.
Approved.
Second. We have a motion, a second. We hung out as long as we could for that thing. We held out as long as we could. We knew it was starting to rattle and stuff, but we, we decided to give in. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Let's go get some fiber run, huh?
Yeah, I'm excited.
Yep, we are too. Wildlife Sanctuary, Bob Gregg, usually doesn't attend. This is a request to install Comcast Internet, internet connection in the sanctuary and set up security cameras at the entrance due to vandalism that has recently occurred in the amount of one-time charge of $199. And a request to pay an invoice to Michiana Rentals for a stage in the amount of eight, seven, $872. That party's still, still getting ready for that thing they're having out there, so yeah.
Uh, motion to approve both requests.
Second. We have a motion, a second to approve both requests from the Wildlife Sanctuary, as noted on the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Uh, Bob Thompson, Plan Commission. And these are all second readings. Good. Morning. Been seeing a lot of you guys lately.
Yes, sir.
All good news. Uh, first one up, we have a request to vacate the unapproved right-of-way in hand-to-hand subdivision, petitioner Thomas Rice. This is the second reading.
Correct.
As you all recall, at our last meeting, we had first reading, we opened it up to the public for, for or against. Nobody spoke up for either, I believe, on that one. And so this is the rubber stamp, second reading of this request to vacate.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, a second to request to vacate the unapproved, the right-of-way in hand-to-hand subdivision for Thomas Rice. Second reading, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Next, we have, this is a rezone again, I-1, Light Industry, Light Industrial Zoning to CH, which is our commercial high debt, high intensity. The petitioner is Tudor Design Center. Uh, this is for LLC, this is a zoning map amendment, this is second reading as well. Open it up to the floor for any comments or questions.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second for a rezone for petitioner Tudor Design Center from I-1 to CH. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Next, we have a rezone. This is R-1, Single Family Residential to PUD, Planning Unit Development. Petitioners FWA Development LLC for Falling Water Subdivision. This is second reading also. And I also like to point out, at the first reading, we did have people show up and all of the people that came and remonstrated were for this development. So that was very positive to see that we're starting to work through the Falling Water Subdivision and we're starting to get some traction out there, which is, I think, really positive. So open that up to the floor as well.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second. We have a motion, a second for a rezone, R-1, Single Family to P, Single Family PUD, petitioner FWA Development. And this is for a zoning map amendment for Falling Water Subdivision, second reading, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Thank you, guys. Any comments or questions, Bob? Nope, did we, were we going to have him read some?
We had a couple more.
Oh, that's right.
We got two more.
Okay, we got SEH. Why don't you get, take, take that one, Bob?
Uh, SEH, this is a supplemental agreement for Bridge 62. We're, have federal aid on this project. It's 625 west over the Kankakee River. That, this bridge is, to give you an idea of the progress and where we're at right now, we're in the process of purchasing right-of-way. They have appraisers going out there now. It's scheduled to be let for construction. We're looking at probably October of 2019, I believe it is. Could be wrong on that, but somewhere around there, that bridge is going to get let for total replacement. We've stopped this project, I guess, in the past and put it on hold for a while. And because of some recurring cost, I know one of the items that came across was that since then, the Kankakee River got designated as a water trail. So they had to go through some additional environmental reporting because of that. So I, they give a history of everything here and why they're asking for the additionals with the agreement. Plus, we have the project engineer, project manager for the SEH, Craig Hendricks, if you have any specific questions sitting here.
What's his name again?
Craig Hendricks?
I don't have any questions.
Uh, just, just for the record, I think a lot, I'm sure maybe a lot of residents here or don't know, but we'll put it into the record. This, this Bridge 62 is a very, very important bridge to Porter County. I don't think people really realize how important this bridge is. It spans across the Kankakee River. It's usually where a lot of obstructions, large trees and other things, always, when the, when the river rises, trees fall in, starts carrying it down the river. This is the bridge that catches it. It's taken a lot of wear and tear over the years. It's at end of life. This last, we, we're usually in there twice a year. A gentleman down south there goes out on the bridge with a big backhoe and he grabs the trees out of the water, voices them up on the bridge and we cut them and haul them away. It's, it's quite a, an event if you see it happen. But this bridge is at end of life. The, the, the really cool thing about it is we're, we're going to be making a lot of changes to that bridge. Right now, I believe it has three pylons or?
Existing five piers in the river.
Yes.
Right now, and we're going to be going down to three.
Three. So that's important, going from five count, you know, five to three because we'll have less blockage as, as things pass through the water. Usually that happens in a very big water rain event when we see these type of things. So your water tables get really high. I think it's, it's a, it's a tricky bridge because you're really limited with the type of elevations and things you have down there to work with. It's, it's, and we have one of the houses that's right on the water, right next to there, so we have to relocate a driveway and some other things. So it's, 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 it's long overdue. I, I think this is a, a, a big improvement for down there, not only for people to be able to communicate back and forth, but in emergency situations too. And we're now going to have a much more robust bridge down there to, to work going forward. And it won't catch as much stuff either. So I think it's all good and it's long overdue.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second for supplemental agreement for additional professional services on Bridge 62, 625 west over the Kankakee River. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. And next up, we have a consultant selection for design engineering Bridge 68. This is Smoke Road over Jones Ditch.
Yes, this is a federal aid project that we have. It's going to be construction letting in July of 2022. We're starting to design services on this and we had a consultant selection team of Mike here, Rich Sexton and myself. And we had five letters of interest or RFPs in on this. And the consultant that rose to the top on this was DLZ. And that's who we're giving the recommendation to.
Uh, motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second for selection of DLZ for the design engineering of Bridge 68 over Smoke Road and Jones Ditch. Again, this is taking place in 2022.
Correct.
2022.
Correct.
So we're now starting to lay the foundation work for our bridge repairs going forward.
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries.
Great.
Thank you.
Bob, like, what do you want next?
Yeah, um, while we have you here, Bob, we wanted to take the opportunity to address something here that sort of popped up last week in county government. We've been getting, as of yesterday, we started, our phones started ringing quite a bit, so we knew something was up. There's an annexation that is, I think, on the agenda tonight at the City of Valparaiso, Plan Commission. They're looking to annex a piece of property within the, to, from county to city. This is up at Spectacle Lake Road, up in the north part in the VLA CD area, Conservancy District, up on the north. And this is something that the City of Valparaiso is pushing forward. And we will be sending a letter of our concerns of this annexation to be entered into the record of the Plan Commission meeting tonight. And basically, the letter will be representing Porter County, basically talking about the roadway infrastructure or lack thereof out there, drainage, lack thereof out there, and other things. And so we want to make sure that the county weighs in on its concerns because this would be a road that would have 40, 30, 40 additional cars going on. It's really not built for additional wear and tear. So we're, we're letting, we're letting the county serve record and notice of, of what our concerns are. The downside to that, I will turn over to Attorney McClure because I think annexations, a lot of people, it's somewhat complicated and a lot of people really don't understand how the process works in the state of Indiana. And unfortunately for the county, we don't have a lot of say-so in this. I'll let Attorney McClure sort of speak to the legality of it. But we just wanted to have a record of this in our meeting to where we've, we've talked about it and then we'll be sending out a, a public letter to the Plan Commission, letting them know of our position.
So, Scott?
Generally speaking, is the, whether an annexation occurs or not, it's between the property owners and the, the incorporated municipality that's, that's hearing it. My understanding that this is the property owners themselves requesting the city to annex. We have, obviously, they, the city has a process by statute to go through Plan Commission, Council, they go through a couple of public hearings. But ultimately, it's not up to us whether or not the pri, you know, that's an agreement between the private property owners and the municipality themselves. We just want to be sure that the concerns of roads and stormwater, those things that greatly affect us on annexations are at least brought up and, and attempted to be dealt with as these annexations happen. But ultimately, it's between the property owners and that municipality on whether or not an act, on, on whether or not there's an agreement on, on the annexation. Normally on this one, like, and especially on this one, normally the reason for the annexation is a twofold. There's either a need for public utilities or there's a need or a want for increased density. And I think we might have a combo of, of those two things here. I think roughly speaking, where our lowest density is, what, 18,000 square feet, give or take?
15.
15. And the city maybe gets down to 11.
Uh, less than that.
Yep, they can go down farther. So it comes to density and it comes to city utilities. That's normally why people want to be annexed somewhere, so. Which is part of our concern and that's why we're having a letter done, is that there's always, already some drainage issues out there that we're well and all painfully aware of.
Correct.
So if the density is to rise on this, on this particular annexation parcel, which we're way far early in the stage, I know that for sure, but if it were to increase beyond even what our codes would allow, it just heightens the concern over the drainage and what's being done.
So, once again, we're trying to be proactive. We're trying to be a voice of the residents in unincorporated Porter County. And we're letting people know what, where our position is. And it's strictly from studying, engineering, infrastructure, current situation that we have out there. Spectacle Lake Road is a very narrow road and it's going to, it's going to take on quite a bit of additional traffic. So then that's a road that, that the county would still maintain as well too. So they would have the annexation, but we would still have the road. So it's, it's not a perfect situation with annexations, but it's the rule of the, it's the law in Indiana as of right now. And we're going to voice our, make our, make our, make our opinion known of, of what we feel about it in a professional and courteous way. So that's what's going on and we wanted to, we wanted to just let the people know and enter it into the record today. So people, we had a discussion about it, so we can get out in front of it. Bob, what's, what's there now that they're, they want to annex? Is it just land?
17 acres of land.
17 acres of land. Do we know what they want to put on it?
Uh, single family, from what I'm seeing, from a proposed concept plan, about 40 to 45 lots in that area. They were showing drainage ponds in the northwest corner and southeast corners.
Do, do these lots abut the actual lake?
Uh, no. No.
Lake's not far away though.
No, it's not far away at all.
Because that, you know.
But all the water goes to the lake.
Yeah.
One way or another.
That's how it gets there.
That's some of the concerns we're hearing on this.
Right, I mean, that, and quite honestly, that's mine as well. I mean, that is, that is a, that is, has a, historically has a very sensitive environmental history there.
Correct.
And you know what, that, the way that that drains and, and eventually gets, gets to the lake. I'm sure Valpo is, is aware of that, it's just that on our part, we make sure that that is, that is, we're crystal clear on how they're addressing that.
Yeah, make, make sure they're aware of it and that they have, there's a plan to address.
Yeah, exactly.
That's an important thing, yeah.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last on our agenda, we have Salvation Army of Porter County. This is a request to the north side of the courthouse grounds on November 8th, Thursday from 5:00 to 8:00 for the Red Kettle kickoff. There will be a Christmas carol choir, hot cocoa and cookies. Bell ringing officially begins on November 9th.
It's a good time, commissioners. That's a good time.
It's a good time. So all those in favor, I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Okay, we're at the end of our agenda. Is there anybody wishing to address this board? Yes. Please come forward, have a seat at the table and state your name and your address. And good morning.
Good morning. My name is Evelyn Caminas. My address is 1087 North Pearson Road, Chesterton, Indiana. I'm not asking for money, I'm not asking for anything. This should be an easy, easy task, however it has not been. And really, this is to go to Mr. Biggs because I had called you July 13th and spoke with you and you said about a problem. And you said, give me, give you a week or two and you would return my phone call. That was July 13th. I called again August 6th, left a message. I called again September 7th, left a message. And I called again September 12th, left a message. You have not returned my phone call, you have not answered any questions, and I want to know why. And I want it for the record. You can speak to me more after.
Well, ma'am, let's start out for what's your, what's, what was the issue you called me about?
Uh, the golf balls that keep coming into my yard. Oh, excuse me, that was part of it. Mainly, it was the golf course does not mow across the road. And in, I, um, they usually mow it if I remind them. And they usually do. They said they would.
And how, how many times have we spoken? At least twice? Well, no, I've spoken to you at least twice.
You spoke to me July 13th.
I've not only spoken to you, I've spoken to one other property owner out there. I've spoken to the golf pro out there.
But you've never called me back, so I don't know what you've ever said.
Do you have a voice messaging system?
Yes, I do. And I have two. If one is still, it goes over to another one.
I don't, I don't know why we haven't connected after that. But I know we've spoken at least twice.
Once.
And I spoke to the golf course. I get no, I get very little understanding or...
And who did you speak to there?
Uh, the first time I spoke was a female there. I don't remember her name exactly.
And when was that?
Uh, that was last summer.
This past summer.
And she says that's just the, that's...
That was last year. There, she's not there anymore.
Well, I spoke, I spoke to a female last summer.
Okay, but I called you in July of this year.
Okay. And I spoke to her last summer. Last time I looked, July is in the summer.
And what problem did you, because mine was the non-mowing. They mowed it last year.
Mm-hmm. And I spoke to him about the mowing. I also spoke to him about the golf balls coming across the road. I can't, we can't, as Commissioners, force a private property owner to mow their grass.
You know, we can't walk outside our yard, we can't walk outside our house without getting, you know, the possibility of getting hit. And I've had damage done to my house numerous times, and I get no response. But this was an easy one that I asked you for, and it was...
I understand. You may think it's easy, but I, as an elected official, cannot force a private property owner to mow the grass.
But you could call me back.
And you, and I have called you back, and I have talked to you twice.
One time.
There's no reason for me to, to...
One time.
There's no reason for me to tell you that, if I haven't. We spoke twice.
You spoke to a neighbor of mine. You did not speak to me.
Yes, I also spoke to him. But I, we spoke twice.
One time.
And you, the second time we spoke...
Because I keep a record of it.
The second time we spoke, I had told you, we cannot, I, you know, we cannot force him to mow it. And I even threw out the, I even threw out the offer, would you, would you care if the highway were to come in?
You told me that's the original one.
And we don't have the apparatus to mow that hill.
Well, no. The highway did come. They mowed along the side. Yes, the highway cannot mow that hill because it's on the golf course property.
Right, exactly. If we started doing that, we'd be doing it every other mile down the road.
Well, and I understand that.
I didn't ask for that. Well, you're asking me, you asked me to have them do it. And they're indifferent about it.
Okay.
For whatever reason. And it's probably due to cost, but there's nothing I can do.
Okay, but I'm here today because you would not return a phone call. I would not keep calling you if you had returned the phone call.
Well, you did get a return phone call. You absolutely did.
One time.
Well... You did get a return phone call.
No.
And I have no messages on my phone in my office.
So then it's not settled, and you could do nothing. And yes, there were messages.
Yes, and I, and...
And if you didn't get messages, you need to get them.
Let's be honest. I mean, you're upset with me or the Board of Commissioners, because we can't do anything.
I'm kind of upset, really, with the town of Chesterton, because they okayed this. However, the driving range is in Porter County, so I have a conflict here. Of course, Chesterton okayed all this, but being that the driving range is in Porter County, I have to go through Porter County for it. This has been going on for 20 years, and there's been no resolution. I've had broken windows, broken outdoor light, you can't walk outside, broken mower blades. I should have some enjoyment of my property, which you can't have.
I don't, I don't disagree with you. I mean, I've even spoken to the county attorney about this a year ago. About...
Him?
Yes. About, you know, about some type of ordinance. No, there's nothing. And the Plan Commission with Bob Thompson. No, we don't have anything when that, when that was approved. There's no specifications as to, you know, what they, you know, about flying golf balls. They put, as you know, they put up, I believe it's 40-foot-high or 60-foot-high screen there. And some of those balls just find their way occasionally over that screen. And then occasionally, you'll get, you'll get the golfer who doesn't care about, you know, they're out there messing around, and start shooting balls in every which way, as long as they think somebody's not watching them.
It doesn't matter.
I, 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 you know, I have compassion for you. I understand that. But I can't go out of my jurisdictional authority and force a private property owner to do something that we clearly don't have the jurisdiction to force them to do. I, and, you know...
Then what do I do? What do I do to stop this?
Well, you have the civil side of it. If they're breaking windows in your house or on your car, then...
Oh, I have done it. But if they're continuous, so then what do I do?
You have, you can take them to court.
Okay, this is a problem that was made by somebody else, by another town, and now I have to pay the money for an attorney to take them to court?
Ma'am, I understand. Have you showed up at the Town Board of Chesterton and accused them of not doing anything?
I've gone, not to the board, no. You know, before I was working...
Start there.
Okay, before I was working. Meetings are usually during the day when working people cannot attend, and I worked. And so now that I'm retired, I can do this. And it's like I'm, I just keep hitting a wall for everything.
Well, if you want to contact them and then tell them that we've discussed, and if they feel, they want to contact me for, you know, further, you know, additional information on how I dealt with them. I got a very cold reception from that golf pro.
You ought to live next to them and see what they say. They're quite arrogant and mean.
I can just, you know, I want to reassure you that, you know, we, all three of us up here get, get residents that call us on a regular basis. But it is, it is, you know, it's not usual that where we actually get in our car and drive over to the point of the complaint, which I did do. You know, I tried to do as much as I can, but I can't, again, I don't want to throw my weight around as a county commissioner and say, you know what, Scott, let's sue them. Well, you can't. Well, let's sue them anyway. I can't do that. Again, I, you know, I would suggest that you approach the town of Chesterton. I will, I will call them today and see, and see what they have on the books as far as what they can enforce out there. But...
You know, it's not like I bought this property to be by the golf course. I've lived there 40 years, and they put in 20 years ago.
And that's exactly what I told them. Because I was told, that's just part and parcel to living next to a golf course. And I said, those homes were there first. And she was...
Most definitely, and I commented about it.
She was very indifferent about it.
That was last year, because she is not there anymore.
And she gave me, she gave me the phone number of their attorney, which I called and never got a return phone call. So I don't know what, you know, short of buying a pup tent and staking it out there and spending the night until somebody shows up, you know, who can answer any questions. I don't know what else I can do. I know it's not what you want to hear, and I feel for you, but I just, I can't, I can't abuse my authority and try to hoodwink somebody into doing something that I really don't have the authority of having them do.
Well, I'm sorry to waste everybody's time, but because I did not get a return phone call, that is why I'm here.
But you didn't, you didn't waste anybody's time. It's what we get paid to do, is to listen, listen to, you know, our residents. So if you want to contact the town of Chesterton,
I have gone there.
I will contact them as well.
I talked to Mark Odell.
Okay.
Who's never called me back. But I did talk to him.
Mark didn't call you back. Okay.
Person-to-person I talked to.
I'll call Mark. You leave your, with Melissa, leave your name and your phone number with her, and I promise you will get a phone call back today.
He said that they, he was not there when it was okayed, that they okayed, you know, the project, but they cannot say, hey, you have to put this here, you have to put that there, you have to do whatever. They do whatever. But I said on the original plan, it was there at the meeting. I saw it, and I commented about it. The driving range was alongside the road.
Well, I, I'm sure that there, they, there's regulations there that they have to follow. But I'm telling you right now, that hill and those noxious weeds, as you, you said, that the seeds are floating over into your property.
Oh, it's like snow on my ground, on the yard.
Okay, I know. You know, I have no idea whether or not I...
There's sticker bushes.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know. And it's dandelion, dandelion seeds and...
Now stickers.
Okay, it's stickers. But I, you know, I have no idea whether or not their property maintenance ordinances over in town of Chesterton allows them...
It's county. That's county.
Well, we don't have anything like that.
Okay. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Melissa. Any otherbody wishing to come forward to address this board? Or Melissa, then? And with that, this board stands in recess.